Madala, o la fata de Senador Rosia. Man se matko se balap, itromu mey lide. Lalol, madala. Ime set, keltin komi, yang so kan kor, nes baxin sista. Raka tin ko poraitit, poket mona don, iyalamalamut. Neng kalwa, ato olulaw na bangka konata ko sunamut. Ime, may patoan, sakar kita, ilinang kapain, sabma yero sih kroisam.
Kalangan, oan paru etkar, de senador etkar, o kalangan de senador kalo staka ke, katlanas muma tay wiyakubur. O ibaan ponasi chief clerk, o roll call.
Senator Abson Abraham, Senator Kikwabish Junior, Senator Isaac Arshwin, Senator Ricky Carl, Senator Sensei Eskar, Senator Wolford H. Edmund, Senator Bill E. Edwards, Senator St. Bigay Adwin, Senator Petter Rico L. Irons, Senator William P. Jawab, Senator Alfred L. Torres, Senator Danny L. Laban, Senator Carter B. Leganet, Senator Tandy Teswell Louis, Senator Benjamin H. Ludwig, Senator Magari Miguel, Senator Erin Nesmovic, Senator Sheldon G. Knapp, Senator Nobel A. Perez, Senator Junicio E. Simon, Senator Mr. A. Simina, Senator Francisco Sinram, May Mr. Stiga, Korom, Mr. Stiga.
Kalangan, namona tay ban katlanas muma tay wiyakubur. Raker, de Sensal Maflor Little, Abram, Senator Perez, Senator Knapp, o Senator Edmon, excuse sang wiyakuburanan. O Sensal Ma Senator Abish, yang madre yang wiyakuburanan. Iman, wuli antay diya wiyasal muma tay el melal, sakaratan kapung o misik, tangkuburanan nilap. Sakaran kay bunyi, o wawlap, tangkuburan raksogo. Wawlap, tangkuburan sogo, o angkisal mali kentko, nalalengko, na kanyeko. Waut oror, o nabalap, kedy palyan triark, o mocho, government, national state, o local government. Waut oror, o kabina han ponde, honorable Stephen S. Joseph, Kuryaun Kabina, honorable Francisco Johannes. Wau angkisong kopung nabalap, honorable Nelson Joseph, o yang omisong kopung han koros. Pasakset, i tungalwa, o vice speaker Miguel, honorable senator han koros. Langlang samoro, layso seriso, sumasangan olanglangan way, pasambalkan, han chamberwood. Men ponde koros, o ka lapot, o tagapaypakan, o nan waykan, mastikin, ponde. Raker, o chail, ye openan han wiyakuburanan wood, o woyakublo leader, re tribadiang chail. Iban patoan takita, vice speaker, and kalwa chail, and ato.
Kalangan, ngkamu main speaker, i tungal ranma, han kamu, honorable members koros. Kamu, kobra, i tungal sakar musik waw, han kakuli, sakal momi, o mitungal may, paytay ken milang. Protona wiyam, pasangan yalamalamut, i tungalwa, han kamu main speaker, o angkisang tagapayan, honorable semutuskan, i bilpatoan, o angkiral, son katongkan, mesu pay yalamalamut. O poluk ranma, oan paya ma, o angkun ponde koros. Main speaker, iman, patoan sakaray kamu, o momotot pa, ki kapantalan watawat in journal. Iman.
Ansalamoh, koros mau dungkamukito masan iyei. O masan isho, tay kapantela, suplamentair watawat in journal.
Kalangan main speaker, i tungal sakaran waw sa pal, i patoan sakaray kamu, o momotot pa, gi kalengkak, ni takte yang, tato rokti yang, ra isu o walu.
Ansalamoh, kamukit sang vice speaker, koros mau dungkamukito masan iyei. O masan isho, tay troktian, o nembay su o walu, o angkat kilong, kamutan kosenetkan, o resolutionkan. O koros, mawor, ay tampil ponase, vice speaker.
Kalangan, ngkamu main speaker, nisangun momot, i tungal sakar musik, sakaray kamu, o momotot pa, tralen trokti yang, o dereteteng, item isak pal, bil kalender. Iman.
Ansalamoh, kamukito. Koros mau dungkamukito masan iyei. O masan isho, kamukit paytar, trail kadkatier, ban order of the day. Chail kumalma.
Yenki baterak, for this year 2025 and for other purposes, only Korea came saklang watawat.
Kalangan, tralenkak katienan masan nembay, iban ponase chairman, kor.
Kalangan, may mister speaker, moni ban bata, sa mukamadin moni, komkuburo bu, yenkak pati yang ati, sa muma masan kosong, sakaratan kapung, ki benuwaw, me padoyar nilang. I tungalwa, ola ban kuburomo, oan tumelal vice speaker, oan honorable senator koros. Bilmen tungalengku, waut oror, ora anma oan paya ma, oan honorable senator kan, mesu debati yang jail. Meseng ranor, pulki sila, kesambal merak. Sabal manki. May mister speaker, waw, karakrak, kamukit molwood, tralenkak. Wiyakuburgi, ong kuryawo, ki zaklang watawat, kamutan kosenetri, o pisilisak, lebanyarri, saklimaw.
Ansal, kamukit sang chairman, koros mau dungkamukito masan iyei. O masan isho, pagiyei, apita, traban katienan masan nembay. Mia masan nembay, chairman?
I kalangan, may mister speaker, kamutan kosenetwood, pato taban kuburan molwood, ninduan, standing kaman de reporteriaw, o pukuan isak limaw, lebanyarri, saklimaw, o pukuan isak isu, lebanyarri, saklimaw, o pati yang resolution isisak, isu, lebanyarri, saklimaw. Awit, nisangun momot, puaki, moni yo, me utangkinin nentong molwood, han kamanata, o ang protingkan, no wait, tabanin uminmin salatak. Puaki, wiyaben, abel don moni yo, ranwood, epesame wukita lo, congress kamanata monwo, esensal ma monwo, bil agis diketikla. Harry, molwood, ninduan wiyaben kosenetwood. Kawit pa memiya, sang sabulmu kamanin moni, molwood anang. Anso you more, wiyaben totog, me ban kapungala, wiyaben abel don monwood, and kakapul. Akasambal in poinanirait, oan totogan, ma apali office in PMU, and kakapul sang. Puakimet, may mister speaker, kamutan kosenetwood, pato no momot, monikan koros, me ban apali office in PMU, ong dian monwood. O unsekto, ninduan kamanaman dan moni wood, epadosang congress. Ah, puakumalwood, ya kamanata, sang muma tay kupulap, monima apali kayon kuadran, abel ben office wood, ani kamanaman dan kosenetwood. Awon monima kamanaman ta sang molwood, o ang kayon kuadran, me padpani waw dala. Rialop, isinen, isikit sama, banut koburburiang, nan sang muma tay kupulap. Ani aralap, i kamutan kosenetwood, me padabahan kuburakan. Kalangan, may mister speaker.
Kalangan, chairman, pagi kabesit, tao ben, eh, kamutan kosenet. Mia dem, masan nembay, kamutan kosenet? Vice speaker.
Kalangan, speaker idan, patoan, dorca to, senator car.
Vice speaker, you flow, o senator car.
I kalangan, may mister speaker, kabenggi, iban bilu tungal yang ki aso ma waw, sensal, memiya, flora amendment kay, me kawana padabuanyang, paytay, ninduan abel ben kosenetwood. Re puakimet, anaw, karakrak, kamukit molwood, tralenkak. Wiyakuburgi, flora amendment numbers, riopisilisak, rial, lebanyarri, saklimaw.
Ansalamoh, kamukito koros mau dungkamukito masan iyei. O masan isho, pagi apita, mia masan nembay, chairman?
I kalangan, may mister speaker, i tungalwa sa pal, ban kuburomo yo, ban kuburakan koros. Kamutan kuta lawat, begbegu waw dalan nen. Ankak, so wasa begbegiyo, me padosang, sabul muma tay private school and STA. Ong program yo, student exchange program yo, me iraisarin school kay, ban wya, ong nan win palaw. Sensal nan kawitkan, me pay wya, men sawas, ong kamutan kosenetwood, ninduan begbegu memiya. Irail, penenaiin serubukat, ala tair dikit, and serubukat. Re bil, wya air fundraising o, PR wantala, wali kit sama. Kisen program wood, and kakuyapilmen kaya, ong serubukat, irail, padoyang nan, totogan community service, ogen, apa apali rekata sang kiitkan, sang, alme padosan teketik, pato du, len nan kolonia. Med, repadawan, me, wya xin programin, eh, serubukat ong community service, o ankak yang wya, sewase kuburan molwood. Kuburma oan mia o sewase tataog wood. Esensal nan aray tungal begbeg, nan, abel ben, kamukit ben serubukan, iara ibanal, nan win palaw. Bil mia kawana badahan government in win palaw, o ngapel palail. Yang aki STA, school, me bupatu palaw. I kamelele, me puaki, update keltan serin school, begbeg wada. Tautan ko na el melal molwood, and utungata o sewase tata, begbeg kasambal wada. Ani aralap, i kawit memiya, nan kamutan kosenetwood. Kalangan, may mister speaker.
Kalangan, chairman, mia dem, masan nembay, chairman Edwin.
I kalangan, speaker i tungalwa. Kapatabat, pati yang salun sakaratan kaykuni, wawlap, nen moya. O angkinkamui, vice honorable memberkan, o irailkan, mayang korkoronge sewal muma tay, wiyakuburan main sing ranet. Mister speaker i tungalwa, netoke flora amendment. Mo dami, imen patoan, iyo kis concern ki. Wiyaben taktak, de so on taktak buka. Namuman tap, namuman nabila kis rakila. Dami concern ki, although dami, patoan amendment wood, namuman me exchange program yo, me top. Dami concern ki, puaki, nan breakdown listing memiya, ni patoan senior class trip. Mo i kasambal ki, puaki, sakul muma tay school taba, kinwya class trip, yaga irail ki, nan triang fundraiser, irail, maramen, del yila masan digyo, or del yila, based on dami. Mo i kasambal ki, so on taktak buka, puaki, ong eh, aid to non public school, bil private schoolka, bil ananganideta, and bil kalawu. Re, anso wood, mo, oang ya, dami i patoan kasambal ki. Sakul muma tay teta, anso wood, tay bil say, re isakul muma tay siidu. Wen teta memiya rea tayl, buenka kapali, utan essential, dami utan konayang, ankakan mia, tokonayang tayla napali, ay imi kasambal ki. I isitu uang, eh, renka kola palaw. Ah, dami kasambal ki, irail med disaid, merben kowe palaw. I, iwan ki, begbeg wood, ah, oang ya, considering me, ananaban scholarship, ananaban school bus, ananaban eh, aid to non public school, oong silok, me irail begbegi anso wood. Eh, considering it's a senior class trip, moyin, tay koros, at one time were seniors, moyin nan na tayl moyo, i senior class tripan, tayl momoyt woi, nitakayakan, wya retreat. Ranwood, eh, school bukat, rebil men, moyin bil silok la, wasa mayakistosang saa, buta, considering eh, financial situation meka tayl kadkatlal, mo i, i patoan utan eh, concern ki, puaki, isitu men end up, based on dami ka taybahan wya ranwood, a school, school tayka, banesayer, me, taktak kake ruyawito, tay bangkak, tay bangkakay, apali schoolka koros, oong so on silok buka. Ay wasar, may iinenan concern ki, eh, taktak men momot, i kalangan.
Mawor, Senator Edwin, vice speaker.
Kalangan speaker, i tungal sakaran waw, sa pal, main speaker, rariaw me, i pokatanan, begbeg men mia, o angkibil pasambal ki. Iroka yoy, esensal sang introduser me, serubukat re, openinere, raise bank. Damra begbegi, men topun. Iroka raya, ikapunggi, nan breakdown esensal insurance, health care insurance me, iraila palu. Nan, nan breakdown men, home alone. Mawet, ikapunggi. I iman, pag melal, mia begbegun, nan public school, aid, barbatu, mon, lisley, turbinan komti. Apa sensal me, sos me ban totogsang, nan non public schoolo, epadosang, nan isos tore. Med, epado tasang, nan general bank. Ten tausan yo, ren patalan, schoolo na apali, kitanserin ponde yo, patong serin region, o international community, me, kausan ponde. Tojatawi akapten. Harry, moyin taktak, pan mia sang school taykan, apna taktak yo, bang sang school yo, me, sutara il, matamata wondrekata, monit akantipuyut, ammo, ewasang neray. Annet, re taktak, men topun. Pakamilele, me, makak, akta lenkak sewasakun rai, talanen, en topun dami rai, nan tiyang erope, en bakal. Patong institute taykan, en kaliyan, schoolo o ost, takal me ban ost rai palaw. Harry, main speaker, sentu wood, sewasamoy kot me ban pit katayala marain, o kairarin schoolang serigan. I patoan, kalangan, main speaker.
Speaker. Mawor, vice speaker, to mister Senator Edwin.
Kalangan, ngkuburun, mister speaker. I sakratangan waw kapatsapat, pati yang sabulmu, majiang er. Oangkun komu, vice, o yangayon honorable members koros, o koros me, paypayan pachail. Mister speaker, ireyo may bil pokatao kasambal ki, oang me pit, iran taktak me, sang serin schoolin STA. Melal, wiyaben aray bil yang sawas, o songongkamukalaya taponde. Imen ansal me palaw, sap magalagal. Me, kuchail bil, nan nanjik, tralenbintu wajari. Ime, ime serikabang wya, niara ikam, momoyt lamu. Karang wya, iran kaskuliyo, o ren bil tiara ta, wya den, wya den aray lapali, magalagal na, sap. Ime yang ujunggi, serubukat yang momoytimo, barantiar, wya den argun, magalagalan palaw. Ime yang ujungata, taktak wood. Kalangan.
Ye nemblo speaker. Mia dem, may chairman.
Speaker.
Na, kamui, chairman in kamarain, kamui.
Kalangan speaker, mona iban yang pati yang sakaratagan, i tungal sakaratan waw. Oangkun komi, vice speaker, honorable members kan korus yan. Esensal nan inangin taktak wood, attachment song koros, me pit inangin taktak wood, esensal mon molwood. Imen patoan, kamranwood, education committee ban, tuulang, nan karongrongun patit. Re kawitkan, me pit, eh, taktak wood, me hangkak, sensal ranwood, kawit yang director. Irailkan, ma apali, piliyang kamarain, me process, the protocolan, apali biktangkan, hangka kudru, department, o bu, trail devil, me masan isho oni, ren mengtay masanin me. Moyin i recommendation, mesi ban patoan yang director ranwood. O angkoros, me pit taktak, me pit school.
We will approve it. 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 I'm going to give you a question. I'm going to give you a question. I'm going to give you a question. We will approve it. 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 And I'm going to give you a question. Amendment.
I'm going to give you a question. 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 Hey. Who is the president? I'm going to give you a question. 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 Hey. Who is the president? I'm going to give you a question. 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 Hey. Who is the president? I'm going to give you a question. I'm going to give you a question. I'm going to give you a question. Chairman.
Senator, I'm going to give you a question. I'm going to give you a little information. 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 I'm going to give you a little information.
I'm going to give you a question. Who is the president? I'm going to give you a question. Mr. Chairman.
Hey, I'm going to give you a question. I'm going to give you a little information. 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 You will have to approve it. We will 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 approve it. Section. We will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. Section. We will approve it. 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 You will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. Grammar. We will approve it. We will approve it. I'm going to give you a question. We will approve it. 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 I'm going to give you a question. I'm going to give you a question. I'm going to give you a question. I'm going to give you a question.
Speaker. Senator Card. I'm going to give you a question.
Senator, I'm going to give you a question. 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 We will approve it. 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 Close.
Senator, I'm going to give you a question. 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 Hey. Who is the president? I'm going to give you a question. 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 Hey. Who is the president? I'm going to give you a question. 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 Speaker. I'm going to give you a question.
Senator, I'm going to give you a question. 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 You will approve it. 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 Senator, I'm going to give you a question. 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 I'm going to give you a question.
Senator, I'm going to give you a question. 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 Hey. Who is the president? I'm going to give you a question. Mr. Chairman.
Speaker. I'm going to give you a question. 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 We will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. And we will approve it. 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 And we will approve it. 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 And we will approve it. And we will approve it. 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 Senator, I'm going to give you a question. We will approve it. 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 And we will approve it. And I'm speaker. I'm going to give you a question.
Senator, please. I'm going to give you a question.
Speaker. Your point of view, Speaker.
I'm going to give you a question. Senator Simuna.
Senator Speaker, I'm going to give you a little information. We will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. Senator, I'm going to give you a question. 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 We will approve it. 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 We will approve it.
Senator, please. Chairman and Kamarain. I'm going to give you a question. I'm going to give you a question. Principal Virginia John. We will approve it. We will approve it. I'm going to give you a question. We will approve it. 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 Yeah, I'm going to give you a question. 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 Yeah. I'm going to give you a question.
Senator, I'm going to give you a question. 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 I wish. Preparation in Royal Athletic. We will have to approve it. I'm going to give you a question. 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 Active. Softball. We will approve it. I'm going to give you a question. 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 Rainsuit. Table tennis. I'm going to give you a question. 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 Atail participation. irail participation amagray man participate ah mayin try bilanana kangongoyaki irail kamapali balan sport may utan try sutukak inactive tro try kuy kamatong mayin try bilanana bil eh or rainsu anbil agis naikuan bil andil agis sanong mawang trial niya try bayang kuy kamatong may utanan try chances talangak yang puita eh inanlaw taimat may man patroan kalangan mawal senator atwin na speaker doon
Speaker kalangan komi kuy kiyanso kamkotong kupur moway tungal wanggin komi wangke files nan burkan goros ibadang kupuramay wangki irkan gorusian ibadang trial nan calorie melel siri school kanwa aray tungal sumbatangkan Mr Speaker nan patroan kawit mesang five speaker matit tamak try susut payang sukset itungal payta kior monetan patroan man kawit kitam eh sun kamatong kan net patro dan list net san san nan eh flora men men watch win in volleyball ol irail makulidi mit cold metal nan madongin eh mashel last year oh win watch enosi tan apali apali rail dami man al kawit namie kuykar taub umbiya tahuliyan eh FSM namie church ban kosa congress eh national government kuyki aray tahuliyan FSM nan kamatong
Yemakapsocha kalalabak
Speaker five speaker Kalalabak bukan kay nomo bozillo kusen nalamiyang essential nan committee or we wibonon paliso eh counter parten sport portunu torun tonbe bagewong o bil we wodil tokong draktoran speciali tunkan ma bana polinsak ogum onu wotan mi misutu toto koniraila me swotu toto ban patro ime payta kmia law pugini niyakiw kuyki sudomatong and softball wia wu mashel ol kuyki wuita silu ma register karabang brumi niyakiwa mi milole boziroi may dependeng sam eh champion murin motong niyap lel met o bil san san malwet kita bisawas pilpatar railer kule yang good wilken balaw rail may dita kela nan festival or nan good wilken wia wu or nan payta kmia bozim osawie obobolansawet gosera berpraktis ya rebre praktis nan din sawon panis waltabatap songtikan or man speaker ngang payta kmia wu essential ninduwon ay kawewo kuyki asake makitabasam tok tok ne patoto magte bana poliata ban onon nan kupu o we wibonopan mia kudail dakwasala moni bonon ama ban mia songtukat ninduwon marabana poli ninduwon kawewo nyamia awome tokoguino ban payta demanda to we wibonowat mia nan bonon committee or draktoran speciali kalangan man speaker
Mia mas niyato masan ben irawon komi chairman
Kalangan man Mr Speaker ay tungal wawasabal ban kupuramay o ban kupurakan goros bil man patro ang malwet o kasamo wang pipadaton principal or irais sering school kan and CCA me patro ang came san ramot may Mr Speaker ibadang ay tungal five speaker karorong laut wia wunan tatok me itan to flora men men watch yi karabane suru report kawit benam may nan karorong me wulia ben executive yang yang aki pateto kempan moni enkak abol matang Mr Speaker essential nan karorong me tonbe ban mogit kia basam kuykit tonbe me puita nan kamatong bukat may wia wu nan win mashel karaben kamatong nindu puiti kejuk eh mi ni sangon momo tada jensu tumatong wia wia wu essential me kau nabadan meos mia wia wu tepu iya kuykitana bakutangke me patpato wasawo nanakomogit ah nan kawit inray may wuliyan to kalian kamatong tonbe nan regertin kamatong me yang aki win balaw win seban win kwam win mashel tonbe me takela nan kamatong bukat ele yang kawit mia irail kan may wuliyan tonbe nan kamatong buko irai man bil biltao bil wuliyan tonbe or imen kamerileme malwet suru ban pay kasalki tonbe yeban wuliyan FSM nan kamatong me ban wia wu balaw ele kabeng me bamiya kuyki puitan tonbe kimat win moni magte ibang kamanata kutikiti kia ma kte ibang kara sayang win moni me kau kau naban mia sang zamata national government patetin tatok wot me bang kama kid rail patpato ninduwontala silloksama moni magte ibang kau nabata enkak yang atet tabun stiben o anan tikijingkan me kinwia kisen anan kan niyanso me government the way kinkama kid irais on madong kan ninduwon kawit inay tungal five speaker ma moni ma congress bang kamanata wapan ichar when kak yang aki tam me malwet ban ma malwet bang kamanata wowet ah ban kolkol dio patpato den antrenal ban imen kabray yang imen kabeng keme malwet pan sabul man kuka beng niyata yang kubel kisa ma tael son madong kan eh ban mogit ki wina basam kuyki sudomen balaw ah sudomen rok sudomen gusai sudomen yap aw nan kamatong kan mesan sal kubonbe me puita or itatok wot imen tungal ngyanso ma opil kabeng kia irai koodkan or irais on madong kan me ban pulikiti arai penenei pulikiti arai tatok mia irail me arai wasan tatok pilpaton marakakate suspend marabogit kuyki arai kubel kuyin tonbe enkak puita nan kamatong bukat irail kosanati marabayam patro or imen kudailente sabul man ki pilkasal ren patola win monwet kutikiti kia niyanso marabam puita kudai me ban bil o laulki o kabengki tonbe yeban puita nan kamatong bukat ai ay tungal ren patro ay tungal five speaker may Mr Speaker kalangan
Niyato masan ben irawon komu senator siyawan senator atward
Kalangan komi honorable speaker honorable speaker komprey wina kacha kacha sahurung masan nan kaiwaniyo wawgan essential erich mong waw ban komi honorable speaker ongo five speaker honorable senators kan yang wangki rail sumbatago siri school kan me pato sam practice ah sahurung may staff honorable speaker honorable speaker ibadwan yang karorong may flora men men essential ban komaylan swet riapki riisak payo labenyal riisak limo o ebit san sal ay tungal lucucho ong rai kan me bang patwalang motong kuy san san me win moni me chay bagbagi kalian bainan kupurata rekak kariyay mele yang imen patwan yomushin talangakan bating timasen ben stan eh flora amen men riapki riisak payo labenyal riisak limo bakar yang
Kariyaman ma kupuramay pone si masan atwar mo be kwe ibadroan me be kia tungal ngyanso moni ban pone si komogit
Kalangan speaker moner nyang patro ay tungal sahuradan kaiwaniyo wawgan patro ang damakom tiyang kier speaker wangkin komi wangke files honorable senator kan o ibilmen kosomo obolasa tau keti me bil yang patro ang talangnan calorie ranwet o siri schoolin praktiskan o Mrs John eh imen patro ang discussion speaker kaidakin boysa trou tung ah ibil yang kasambalki irawakan mesan sahuradan ingkapan kuy ikamileleme nan isangon eh tatok wot ibilmen yang patroan eh supporting document kan me ban kasalida is me ban patrola eh tam eh FSM ban support o tamak try ban support kuy isan salong try niyanso maktryal bangnya da decision me pit irail contribution ongsangon komotong kabaktry we wogeme utan enosi o congress irail kan support mayot me pit olympics me komotongan saw goros or ya imen kasalida mos speaker kalangan
Kalangan masalal masan ben irawo try ban pone si komogit kalian uting ti masan be koros mau tung komogit to masan iyay o masan iso komogit puita kalian uting ti er masan to koros mau tung talang sabul man kita flora men men riapki siri sak payo labenyang riisak limo masan iyay uong masan iso komogit puita kalian sabul man kita flora men men riapki siri sak payo labenyang riisak limo
Speaker Kalangan speaker riman patro ang tawit talang puyak maas o korak yang ban ira isak wonou
Dan salamaw komogit may mia sang five speaker koros mau tung komogit to masan iyay o masan iso komogit puita kaidolak ti era bonanbe isak wonou komu five speaker
Kalangan speaker mo ay tungal sakarong wawasabal o kosomo tau kipadang kail irail takan trong kabrayang sumbatag mayang melel future leadership man tonbe yera imen patro talangak kumalji o kosomo rail karangkakabali arail tumal program nakakdela trong taulan
San sal ninduwon kawit may mia sang five speaker talang kumaldi laben ngyanso talang mayteang principal John o sering school kan sang CCA orankak wia ray tungal program man kabeng eh 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 matsuman uong akreban kumal laben ngyanso mayteang principal John o sumbatangkan o irail mapali sering school kan o sering school kan renkakan sakariti tatamar atoki reday ranwet kalangan try ban kumal o imen be kitan try ban kumal kuy kiyanso ak may katkatran nan malamay kan o mayteang principal John enkak patro taatom me enkak kapet setan bang wia wu yo is sumbatag me bang kak yang kawewo tan wia wu surge kaparay taatoma trial kumal laben ngyanso Sarge kaparaita atoma, kailan pombal labin anso.
Speaker.
Komu pa speaker.
Speaker, ay tungal sakaran wa sapal o kapung. Esansal magkail pombal kitu magkail kasomo principal o irail tongs school kan en papdis, kubukupurirail kalangan en momait kasapal. Kalangan memiya sang momot wet opun by state government ong irail me magit me irail patrol angon masel. O pro kita irail tungal kisadis metiketik apa tapat, tetikso bukat tan wonona irail esansal. Speaker, esansal nomrin sawasirananut klokiu patola katrop kay tokasantian tutong kay mia. Mebit komogit inananen pil, PTA angkembang kamar irail o kono bangkak mia. Kamelilema anso ong patro kan luon flora amendment kan nanane attachment breakdown song kan enkak kono patah. Anso ong kailangka kamen abil riop isilisak mia to, ran payo lulu. Mia ban patola kajiran payo ran isu dulu. Kailan nika robo man speaker riman wia tak komogit diu, kailangka komaltisan an wia lamalam maitang kamtikan en tutok. Rong sapali nan molwet mia klokiisak.
Kariaman. Ivan entertain motion, kailan pombal disan an wia kupuro sapal menelakap ataniyet obosela wia kupuro. O flora amendment kan ituwon patroan me mija tremay taisai kapali ala tayban napali niyet. Mekila puit tungal yo mebang patro tamurun me tap, mahakakawila niyet.
Speaker iyal, kalangan komus speaker ay kroan wow. Speaker monowet ban ponasak komogit memiya, hakomkuproyo panroturot labin mekot motomot. Speaker riman padawan nuwaw eh panroturowet wia tak komogit diu. Eh o senet diu magitay kotik kamanala watuwat kayu ayu klokol member yopu paisak labin ya riop isak limao. O kaburulang comedian eh education. Ay member tuwan nuwaw pagi ma comedian finance kakapata patrong comedian education o ragak report on special session.
Mahawai chairman.
Padawan consult chairman mona ipatrong wia tak komogit.
Koros moutung komogito masan iyei, uwa masan iso, komogit paita ituwon kawait memiya. Kamiti assignment masainan education, kamitin finance and patro, o report non special session. Koros moutung komogito masan iyei, uwa masan iso, komogit paitar wasaimen wo kapatroyang ar comedian muli. Masilar iro toro tayban ponasak komogit kailan pombal disan an wia kupuro sapal menek klokiisak niyet. Koros moutung komogito masan iyei, uwa masan iso, komogit paitar o kalangan senetor kan koros tayban pombal diu sapal menet niyet klokiisak.
Finance eh financial public works.